That's hard to say.
I need seats.
We're going after standing too. For those who just got here, there are a number of things that are taking place, just bear with us. Create a little flexibility for us and we will do our best to continue to do this. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Marlboro City Council, August 27, 2023. You'll stand for the place of the reasons followed by my own. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic which makes it one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, just as all. We have one item that has been added to the agenda, it's going to be under the number four. It's a resolution that they are literally making in a sketch. Regular events, you have them before you, so a regular adoption. Of course, can be August 8th, regular events, the August 8th work session minutes, the August 8th executive session minutes. August 15th, special call meetings, and August 15th executive session minutes. If there was a series of discussions, I'm going to take them apart and just call them out. I think really good, just so that the council can make decisions. Do I hear a motion to approve regular events for August 8? Do I hear a second? All those in favor say aye in confidence. Hearing none, Ms. Knight.
Aye.
Ms. Dean.
Aye.
Ms. Quah.
Aye.
Ms. Trent.
Aye.
Under the work session minutes for the same day, August 8th, do I hear a motion to approve? Do I hear a second? All those in favor say aye, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye, Ms. Knight.
Aye.
Ms. Dean.
Aye.
Ms. Quah.
Aye.
Ms. Trent.
I read the back one. So my motion for the regular meeting is made and for the work session, for the work session is, yeah.
Executive session, August 8th, do I hear a motion to approve? Do I hear a second? All those in discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye, Ms. Knight.
Aye.
Ms. Dean.
Aye.
Ms. Quah.
Aye.
Ms. Trent.
The meeting minutes doesn't reflect what is at the meeting. There's some important, there are important decisions discussed and made, not made but discussed. But the meeting minutes, we didn't, it left out no information.
Special call meeting, August 15th, 2023, do I hear a motion to approve?
So.
Do I hear a second? All those in favor say aye, discussion. Hearing none, Ms. Knight.
Aye.
Ms. Dean.
Aye.
Ms. Quah.
Aye.
And Ms. Trent.
Aye.
Final, August 15th, executive session minutes, 2023, you have them before you, do I hear a motion to approve?
So.
Do I hear a second? Discussion, hearing none.
May.
Go ahead.
The way the meeting minutes recorded, what happened in the meeting is left out tremendously detail of how did the meeting go. And something like didn't happen is reported in the meeting minutes. So, and unfortunately, I would just give it the head of the meeting minutes as when I could, or else it's party. So I, I usually have a note to the council, but I, there wasn't enough time for me to bring that consent to the council members. And beside that, all the, the executive meeting, it's supposed to be recorded by the person who did not attend the meeting. It isn't executive meeting, it is recorded by a person who did not present in the meeting.
There's a reason for that. What we'll do is, for them, we'll defer, we will defer and I'll put them on.
I didn't have the two minutes, those were done by the attorney. I'm just, those minutes, I'm, as a public defender, I obtain that.
But this is, this is defer that to the next council.
But it still is told to a person, the second meeting already is told to the person who did not, who wasn't present in the second meeting. In both the second meeting on August 8th and August 15th.
Okay, on the August 15th, we realize there's some discussion, we will defer that to the next council. Presidents, we got a lot of people here to ring, and this one is, I've actually been waiting since, in the meeting, she had a fantastic proclamation, but the man's a friend of mine.
You've heard us talk about the Oscar and Dorothy Wilson, in terms of being able to save their home for at least a couple of council meetings. And the goal was to recognize everybody that went through the effort to answer the calls, to do what they needed to do to be able to do the best we could. And it was, again, some pretty long hours. But, but the one person who probably sealed this deal more than anybody was Ms. Rachel Scott. She works with Atlanta Legal Aid, and their goal is, is to be able to help seniors and a number of other people, to be able to make it so that your house isn't actually taken from you. And I'm going to give her a chance to speak here in just a second. But, in this particular case, you know, by the time they were even aware of it, you know, the fourth pledge, it had already happened. But without her succinctly writing something in a platform that left no fluff in it, it was just very basic in terms of this is what happened, these are the facts. This young lady put this thing together, and that is what allowed us to be able to put another group of people together relatively quickly. So we didn't have this, here's what I think, here's what's there, here's the facts. And everything from the congressman getting him involved and a couple of others also, I promise you, could not have done this without. So, in recognition of Ms. Rachel Scott, proclamation from the city of Marlboro. Ms. Rachel Scott is a staff attorney at the Senior Citizens Law Project of Atlanta Legal Aid Society. And whereas Rachel Scott represents older clients in civil litigation matters such as mortgage litigation and modifications, public benefit issues, probate, financial exploitation, and consumer matters. And whereas Rachel Scott in 2016, received the National Consumer Centers Law Rising Star Award, give her a round of applause for that. Which honors an attorney who made major contributions to consumer law within the past two years by trying and settling a case of great success and significance. And whereas Rachel Scott earned her Juris Doctorate School Honor, that means she's exceptional breed, and was 2008 valedictorian at John Marshall Ross School in Atlanta. And whereas elderly couple, Oscar and Dorothy May Wilson, Dorothy May who suffers from the onset of dementia, and Oscar suffers from serious health concerns, took a home equity loan a decade ago, and due to fraudulent activities missed several payments for a value of $111,000. The bank had completed a non judicial foreclosure, the home had been auctioned out of courthouse steps, and the Wilsons were facing a dispossessor hearing in reverse. Whereas Rachel Scott was critical to the outcome, on Friday, June 20th or June 30th, 2023, the end of God was apparent in miraculous and unforeseen terms of events. The company that purchased Wilson's home signed it over to them free and clear. Therefore, I, John Lamplemire, the city of Marlboro, joined with the members of our community and radically cleansing Rachel Scott for her selfless dedication and hard service to the persons.
Thank you so much, Mayor Lamplemire, and the city council. Those of us in public service, I think, answer a call. It's, our work is more of a calling than it is a career. We seek to better the lives of those in the communities that we serve, and so we don't do it for recognition. And so I have to say that this is a particular honor to me, to, to be recognized for my work on this really tragic case with a completely miraculous outcome, that really was just completely inspiring to be able to partner with Mayor Lamplemire and all the team on the city council and at city hall to be able to achieve this extraordinary outcome for a very deserving couple. So thank you all so much, and thank you, Mayor.
Recognizing Marl High, R O T, A F R O T C, probably military folks, you don't want to make a mistake on that one. Marl High School was originally located at the intersection of O'Reilly, Marlboro, and Maddox Road. And where Marlboro's High School was recently relocated to Ellwood in a new $96 million facility. Work began on the 344,727 square foot building in January of 2020. The new three story facility can accommodate up to 2,000 students and includes a media center gym, auxiliary gym, and a project was funded using education special purpose, local arts and social studies, voted by voters in 2019. Whereas Marl High School is one of the top tier schools in Clayton County, was founded in 1969, and is the home of the Mustangs. In August 2023, Marl High School was awarded one of the highest honors given to the headquarters, Air Force Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps. The school was awarded the Silver Star Community Service Award. This award is bestowed upon the Air Force Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps units that rank in the top 5% nationally for community service to the nation, to the local community. Earning this award is a remarkable accomplishment. Marlboro's unit totaled nearly 3,000 hours of community service, making it the first ever Silver Star Community Service Award received by unit in Clayton County Public Schools. Bear the city of Marlboro, recognize Marl High School, unit's cadet, and Sergeant Lenell Deloix Bruiser for exceptional leadership in guiding this group of cadets to achieving outstanding excellence in representing Clayton County Public Schools.
And I have to say this, today is my little birthday, my mother passed away six years ago. But one thing that she is still in me was service, and our core values is service before self. So in order, as a person that was raised by my mother, it was to pay it forward and instill that upon my cadets. And it, 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 it means so much, especially for today, to, for us to earn this award. For you all, I wouldn't be here without you putting in the work, going in 100%, y'all know I love y'all, right? And for the parents that came out to support, I apologize for wearing your students out, but it pays off, it pays off, and I promise you they'll pay it forward too. All right, thank you.
And we're going to recognize a, a number of kids, you might want to give this up here in the office, because I mean, you did all the work.
Mayor, if you would not mind, the DFW also would like to acknowledge.
No, no, go ahead, come on.
Excuse me, ma'am. Put too much work on the city clerk, you're losing your nerve. You prepare an agenda and you forget. Ladies, mayor councils, citizens, honor readers. I'm Wayne Collins, local commander, DFW Post 58, and he's my comrades, I have my state adjutant, Tony Dobbin's here tonight. I have my state auxiliary president, Ms. Pat Dobbin's here tonight, my advocate, Dr. Smalls, and my adjutant, Vicki Jennings. Everybody know Vicki, the one that talks a lot. It is truly an honor that, to be here and have the city allow us to play a part in this. We know what a life of service is about. The men and women standing before you today, the men and women in the back of the room, they're the guardians of the free. They're the guardians of the freedoms that we enjoy today. And when we're not guarding, we're doing community service. And to hear these young cadets accomplishing over 3,000 hours of community service is just outstanding, and get them around. And we at the DFW, we committed our lives to community service. But I can assure you, looking at this age group back here, it won't be 3,000 hours. So I'm going to ask our state adjutant and our, our state president, if they'll come up, come forward and present the plaque.
On behalf of the state commander, Veterans of Foreign Wars presents Marlboro High School Air Force Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps, A R J R T C, Silver Star Community Service Award, and special recognition and outstanding achievement by ranking in the top 5% nationally for community service. Your unit's exceptional leadership ability shows what teamwork can accomplish in the community. And witness thereof, we have here to set our hands under the official emblem of Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States, given the 22nd day of August, 2023. Pat, you're the commander, Troy Dobbin, adjutant.
We also have a special package here for the cadets and students at the school. We have providing you with opportunities for scholarship dollars from the Veterans of Foreign Wars. We have various programs that the Veterans of Foreign Wars support to, and give to students annually. And we hope that you take this and, and you get your cadets and your students to collaborate in scholarships.
This is Cadet Devon Woods, he is our deputy commander.
I'll read the first one, and it says, Cadet Devon Williams. On your outstanding excellence in representing Clayton County and Marlboro High School for the outstanding achievement is recognized by mayor council. Congratulations and thank you, August 22nd, 2023.
This is our commander, Cadet Jordan Montez.
This is Lillian Brown Mark. This is also our one who has earned her first set of wings under our private pilot program, Mrs. Cadet Joyce Romo. And this is our command chief, Cadet Sam Wing. And, and then we do have Cadet Verdel, who is not here today. And then the, the ones that we, I would like to recognize who are here, but we don't have a secret, we do. It would be Cadet Perry, which is him, and then we have. Cadet Montez. Cadet Laura. Cadet Raffia. Cadet Monica. Cadet Alan Ronalds. So, in closing, before I sit down, I always have to do this for my cadets, because this is how we knew every program. Emily's Creed.
I am the Air Force Junior R C C Cadet. I am connected and faithful to every court cadet served in communication of patriotism. I earn respect and honor before I rise to protect me first, serve for myself, and excellence in all we do. I will always believe in myself to bring credit to my family, school, for cadets to me and to myself. My character defines me, I will not lie, cheat, or steal. I am accountable for my actions and deeds, I will hold up my actions to help. I will honor those I serve with, those who inform me, and those who mentor me. I am a patriot, a leader, and a member of the principles of all serving lead. I am the Air Force Junior R C C Cadet, now.
That is our creed.
Next is Marl, Department of Police, Department of Promotional Ceremony by Sergeant Doctor Fo, and Corbin Burdlong. Thank you, everybody. I actually have a very funny story about the first person who's promoted, Sergeant, Sergeant Fo. Sergeant Fo and I had a conversation when I told him that he was next in line to be sergeant, and he asked me if I put it in writing. And at first I was going to say, no, I'm not going to put it in writing, my word is my bond, and you're going to be promoted to sergeant. But I thought for a second, and I said, there's a reason why he's asking if he put it in writing, so I said, sure. And I gave it to him about 15 minutes later, and it turned out, what, three or four weeks later, you were promoted to sergeant?
Yes, sir.
So I called him in the office, and I said, you're going to be the next sergeant, you're going to be promoted. He said, thank you, this is great for my family and everything, and I said, I'm going to need it in writing, but you're going to be there Monday morning as a sergeant. So he wrote it to me in Vietnamese. And I thought that was great, I thought that was great. And that's the kind of relationship that we have here at this department, is, you know, nobody's too big to joke with another person, or, you know, nobody's too small to be able to joke with somebody else, we're all on an even playing field, we're a team, and I'm, I'm really proud of Sergeant Fo, and he's overcome a lot of adversity with, uh, medical problems in his family and everything, and he's never shown any, any sign of that. He's powered through everything, he's been C I V, he's taken on every challenge, and he's done it successfully. I'm sure that his family is very proud of him, as we are. Sergeant Fo, if you'd like to accept this plaque right here? Would you like for me to, would you like to pin on your badge?
Yes.
Pin on his badge for me, please, ma'am? I don't have as equally as funny stories about Sergeant Burdlong, but Sergeant Burdlong and I have had a, a good relationship ever since we got here. He's, everybody loves Sergeant Burdlong, I mean, he's, he's, he's a great guy. He's taken on responsibility, he too, he's dealing with issues with his family and illness, and he comes in, he gives us 100%, he's liked by everybody, he's overcome adversity with his family, and he loves, one of our most beloved members of our department. I don't think I've ever seen him not smile, and I'm sure that you guys out there, when he's been calling and everything, have seen that as well. He's just a fantastic person and what I can add. Thank you, sir. You want to scream? Those are big shoes to fill.
It is big, Shaq, for him, he says it all. So, yeah, Burd's part of my whole team, when we first started here in Marlboro, it was me, him, Glover, and Mills. I was a, and old Moth seller over here, I mean, he's getting kind of rough looking now. He was, uh, we were the dream team here, Star Golf, and I watched all three of the people serving under me become sergeants here. Mills, Glover, and Al Burd, this is, uh, this is really an honor of mine, just to see him get, like you, we're, we're family. Me and him are definitely brothers, but, oh, have mercy. I know the fuss, it gets hard to understand him at first, but now I'm starting to speak a little bit of the, of the language, so, uh, man, I just, I feel, my eyes are filling with tears. I feel so good for you guys, man, I'm just so proud of you both, y'all.
Thank you.
Proud of you all.
Stick him. See, she will.
Is it okay that individuals stand up there?
Oh, I'll need to take pictures.
Let's go ahead, let's step down. Let's go, ma'am. Let's get everybody over here, can't take pictures. And then, that's interesting. If you don't have to, everything. Yeah, let's do it. Great, thank you. All right. We didn't get a speech. Okay, you wanna, you wanna go first?
Yes, yeah, I'll go.
You want your nephew to take all of your pictures, man, bro.
Great. Just one more picture.
Of course.
Kyo, Bobby, Folch. That's all the team.
Armor, shoot. Yeah, yeah. Is ready?
Thank, thank you. Of course.
Thank you, guys. Do you want to take some pictures in the mirror or you'll just take? Beautiful family.
Thank you, sir.
Why can't I look good, man?
Glory.
Wait, may I have one? Scott?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Do we pay the bill?
Can I give you my phone, too?
Sure.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, the computer, wait, one, two. Cancel my call. One more. One, two. Okay, okay.
Mayor, I would like the opportunity to address the students directly. Just very brief comments. This is one of those moments where you are excited to connect the bachelor community. I truly appreciate the hard work that your students have executed in your community. And I want you to know that your community sees you, we appreciate you. We are just so excited for you. We look forward to all of the great things that you all plan to do in your future. Please feel that as a high school student, that your community is paying attention and we treasure and we value you. This opportunity to acknowledge you all and recognize you during the council meeting is, is just a formality, but the reality is, your community sees you and we appreciate you. We need you. You all are the future of our community. We will not sit in these seats forever. And the training ground that you all have and the program that you're in is, is of excellence. So I just wanted to say that to you all. Thank you all for working in the community. It's where you live, the foundation of unity of every community is your neighbor. And we see you and we appreciate all that work.
Yes, I would like to say, thank you for the hard work and dedication. You guys are looking good and you guys are our future. So, thank you.
I just wanna say that my goodness, you all look good. And the uniform is outstanding. And I thank you all for what you're doing. It is definitely, you all favoring on our future and our future, so thank you very much.
Well, usually we do the public comment after we make the decision of the business, but I guess we're afraid that after, some time to time, like everybody will, you know, the meeting. But thank you for the great work that you do. And this is the item for the council to make out tonight. And each individual of you will be the foundation brick for our future. So thank you for that and keep doing the good job. Thank you.
Move it up. New out agenda, bilingual ballots. For those who kind of miss it, I'm gonna just paraphrase it, out of work session. City Council had voted recently unanimously to ask the citizens the question as to whether we should put bilingual ballots as a question for the members. Over the last couple of days, we've been informed by the county, specifically the legal department, that they will not put that question for the city of Mar on the floor of our citizens. We have an intergovernmental agreement with them to conduct our election. We simply do not have the time to make additional changes. And we actively sought in the work session and otherwise for those that are here, solutions that would be fair there. We had the staff, based on just general consent, prepare a resolution. As the members of the council read that resolution. Here are your additional questions. This resolution is, I'm gonna read it for you. It probably has typos in it, so if somebody wants to complain, complain to Baker who draws capital for your proposals. Resolution 2309, a resolution to utilize a bilingual ballot for all city elections for the next election cycle beginning in 2025. Provided for separability, repealing inconsistent resolutions, and providing effective aid for other purposes. Whereas, whereas the city of Mar is ordered to choose a public body corporate politic duly chartered as a municipal municipal corporation existing under the laws of the state authority. Whereas, the city is vested with the power of the government of the state. Whereas, due to the current demographic breakdown of the population, whereas in the interest of a lot of American citizens, they vote in the language they speak. And whereas, the city has received requests to add Spanish to the official city ballots. Whereas, the mayor council of the city of Mar is ordered to wish to add these languages to the city of Mar ballots. And whereas, the mayor council of the city of Mar exercises their sound judgment discretion up to giving thorough thought to all implications of Mar. And keeping in mind the public interest and welfare of the citizens of the city and its supports, have determined it's in the best interest of the citizens of the city that this resolution be adopted. Now therefore be resolved that the city council of the city of Mar, as follows, have one ballots. The city of Mar will utilize bilingual city ballots for the election starting in 2025. Should the elections officials of Clayton County be unable or unwilling to conduct elections for the city utilizing bilingual ballots, the city of Mar reserved the right to sever existing agreements with Clayton County and conducted some elections. Number two, public perks. The city finds that the foregoing action constitutes major step in preserving our safety and well-being and economic vitality of the city and citizens thereof, and are therefore consistent with the public purpose and powers attestation. And the council of the city of Mar hereby obliges the mayor to sign out documents before other action necessary. Effectuate this resolution to have the city of Mar's authority. City clerk gets authorized to attest the city of Jordan mayor or any other city official appearing on documents necessary appearing on this resolution to fix these official city seal. As necessary, the process will include any related documents from the official record of the city for future reference. Separability, the extension of this resolution is clear to be valid and enforced or not binding, thus not be effective or reinforced in this resolution. If there are conflicting provisions, all city provisions hereby appeal to the extent of the system of this resolution. If I do make this resolution take effect in the day approved by city council. And if adopted, that would be adopted to the number 27, 2023. You want me to read that just by the way I just read it? Bottom questions, comments?
Yes, um, is this the only to the discussion we've had?
Good, Sam, yes.
So, in the communication between the city and the body, there is a statement that the legal approval process, what is the legal approval process for the referendum to be on the ballot?
Have you seen the document? The document says they're not going to do it. That they would do like a traditional election for us. And I'm paraphrasing some of this, because we would still be entitled to do the elections and say, well, we're done with the past. It's just a simple statement basically saying they're not going to put the ballot question that you requested on the November 7 ballot for the citizens.
Thank you. In the state, let me say that, I'm just asking about the work say in this communication and this legislative approval process, or have the referendum to be on the ballot. And I'd like to have a understanding, what is the process?
This is where this gets a little complicated because you guys can't see what we're reading. All right. And some of their definitions of reasons why, outside of just saying don't want it. One of their examples would be, cannot expend municipal funds for a struggle, for example. Some of it, where they're having discussions about getting approval from the secretary of state, or getting approval from the state legislator, even having a ballot in the first place. Even though we all know we've answered about the question before that was not binding probably less than two years ago. So, those are just simply answers that people provide on a piece of paper, whether they're valid or not. The real question is, is you're out of time.
Could you, Mr. Mayor, could you explain the legislative approval process? So, council, I, as a council member, can be informed in the decision. And also, when it say the straw vote, it doesn't refer to a statue or a long coat that articulate the situation. Since I have, I just feel like there are people that might, if the audience that might not understand, then I shall have no choice but translate what I say to Vietnamese.
Other questions?
Mr. Mayor, could, could you give me an understanding of the legislative approval process? So, I can be informed to make the decision.
The attorney, the attorney who wrote it. It's written right there as, as clear as everybody else up here in the proceeding.
I see.
I did not, I do not agree with it, but that doesn't mean that they're not going to do it. That matters.
I see that. So, the email here states send on the night, 10/1 AM. And this is very important and just means that the entire community have been looking forward into, and that is something I would appreciate if this information be communicated to the council members sooner, so we can have an input, like myself, be having understanding. When they say the, not go to the legislative approval process, what exactly does that mean? So we can be informed and can make the decision. Because we cannot just make the decision, they are say, oh, it's going through the process. But what is the process? How long will it take? Is, that is something that we should be, not like solid in place, but we'd have enough understanding about what is before making the decision.
Other comments?
So, based off of my understanding, what we're voting for at this time is for the city to go ahead and take the lead and provide for city elections, multilingual ballots. Based off of conversations previously had, we thought we would have the opportunity to work through the county and the citizens voting on it. That currently is not the fact. The county has expressed that they're not going to put it on the ballot for us, but this is our opportunity. So this is our opportunity to, um, provide multilingual ballots, ballots as a city, for the city elections. This is, this is what we're here for.
Yes, ma'am.
Any more questions?
Mr. Paul. No questions. Miss D.
No questions.
Karen, do I hear a motion to approve resolution twenty-three oh nine?
Subtle.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made properly seconded, all those in favor say aye, Miss Snack.
Aye.
Mr. Paul.
Aye.
Miss D.
Aye.
And Miss Snack.
Uh, may the communication was not appropriate for the council to be proactive and be informed to make the decision when we don't know, um, the exact reason. The reason was a star vote, but there are no law reference to that definition.
Motion carries. Ordinance number twenty-three oh five, we saw earlier the finance officer, um, make a presentation. Your actual mileage number will drop. And it's a net zero from a tax increase standpoint. Is the finance officer still here? He's not right on the top.
I have my house tried, I say I abstain my vote. You must be kidding.
I thought you said.
I say my house tried, abstaining my vote. And then I didn't, the reason, so I abstain in the vote.
I know you're already giving it, but just paraphrase what, what you saw. Because it's the first reading, we'll have a second reading at the next council meeting and we'll adopt it at that point.
I need to go up there.
No, no.
The miller rate's going from eight point four nine nine.
You gotta talk louder than that guy.
We're going from eight point four nine nine miller rate to seven point five four one this year. And that gives us a zero percent property tax increase.
Excellent. And like I said, this is the first reading. We're going to go to general comments, we got a quick executive session on, on, on personal issue. And we'll come back on some of that. But, uh, comments from the general public. You got us?
Mayor, what is the executive session about?
In this particular case, it's going to be personnel.
Oh, what kind of personnel?
Um, personnel.
Well, uh, the reason I'm asking is the last time the executive session stated personnel. And so we didn't know what was going on. And then when you come back with the resolution, you know, it was really surprising to me. So is this going to be the same thing?
I don't believe so. Now until you actually go back there, everybody has a chance to talk. I can't tell you exactly what's going to happen. But I have a pretty good idea of what we're going in for. And what I can say with confidence is it is personnel and it's not related to anybody sitting up here. Does that make you walk up?
Yes, I doubt.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, is this, is that what it is? Of mail is that going to be related to me?
It is not.
Okay.
I hope. Any other comments?
Hi, do you, Mr. Mayor? Good evening, everyone. My name is Long Tran State Representative for Husbisford Dade. I was here at the last meeting and the meeting before, so the first one I didn't speak at. The last meeting I spoke, I asked the mayor to send me some of the state statutes that he was referring to when he responded to, um, Councilwoman Tran and others. And I did not get a response. And last week there was an executive session and then subsequently made a public session voted censure Miss Tran. So I want to show or explain what the open meetings act passed by the state legislature back in, I think, two thousand twelve. It's fifty fourteen dash one. I'm not going to go through the whole thing, but I am going to make some clear points. Prior to any meeting, the agency or committee homing such meeting shall make available an agenda of all matters expected to come before the agency or committee at such meeting. The agenda shall be available upon request and shall be posted at the meeting site as far in advance of the meeting as reasonably possible, but shall not be required to be available more than two weeks prior to the meeting and shall be posted at a minimum at some time during the two week period immediately, immediately prior to the meeting. Failure to include the agenda on an item which becomes necessary to address during the course of a meeting shall not preclude considering and acting upon such item. Section two A, a summary of the subject active on those members present at a meeting of any agency shall be written and made available to the public for inspection within two business days of the adjournment of a meeting. Now, that has not been done. I have not seen anything on the public site of Marl County that is available for the public to understand why that vote happened and what the reasons behind that censure was. This is a violation of state code. Section B, the regular minutes of a meeting subject to this chapter shall be publicly recorded and such records shall be opened to the public inspection once approved as official by the agency or, or its committee, but in no case later than immediately following its next regular meeting. Which means those meeting minutes that you decided to defer, defer today, that you wanted to vote on, you're supposed to have them ready for the public today, according to this state code. However, nothing contained in that chapter shall prohibit the early release of these minutes. So if you're wondering what the legal mechanism of this is, this appeared under fifty fourteen dash five, section A. The superior courts of this state shall have jurisdiction to enforce compliance with the provisions of this chapter, including the power to grant injunctions or other equitable relief. Under section B, and any action brought to enforce the provisions of this chapter in which a court determines that an agency acted without substantial justification and not complying with this, this chapter, the court, unless it finds that special circumstances exist, assess in favor of the containing party, reasonable attorney fees, other litigation costs. So, so far what I've seen from this council is placing things on agenda at the last minute without notifying every single council member. At the last meeting I was at, you put the ballot referendum up, but you did not notify Councilwoman Tran. It was clear that every council person knew, but heard that you were placing that on the agenda. This is concerning. This means you are acting to prohibit an elected official from carrying out their duty. This is a concern. I don't think this is a legacy this council wants to be left with. Now I'm going to bring up another concern. At some point a few years ago, this council decided to change its charter to prevent the city attorney from talking to the city council members unless it goes through the mayor or the majority vote of city council. Now, you cannot change the form of government without approval of the state legislature. I'm sure you guys have some reason. I'd like to see what provision under home rule this allows. I have not been given a response from your city attorney or the mayor as to what provision home rule allows this change. Under the state law in Georgia, there are three possible councils. Council manager, which means the city manager pretty much runs the day-to-day operation of the city. Weak mayor council. A weak mayor council means that city council runs the day-to-day operations. It's pretty clear what the city manager hired. This is not a weak mayor council. Or a strong mayor council, in which the mayor makes most of the decision and executes most of the policy. Now, based on the original charter, this is a council man, man, manager form of government. The moment you start dictating what staff can and cannot do with the city council and move most of the power over to the mayor, you're changing the form of government. It's how I understand it. And so you cannot do that without approval from the state legislature. And I once again ask that the city attorney or the mayor's office provide me with the legal code that allows you to change and amend the city charter at this level without talking to the state legislature and applying home rule. And as I said before, under open meeting act, once the executive session meetings are done and approved and you guys proved that resolution, you guys discussed during open meetings, it must be presented to the public. So this is my formal request to you, the city clerk, to present me those executive meeting minutes as soon as possible as your state representative. Thank you.
Just out of curiosity, you said my state representative. What district do you represent?
I'm District Dade, Donwilly, Dorville, Chambi, but I'm a state representative for all of Georgia. When I vote on laws, the laws affect the entire state of Georgia. So I may not live in your state. Huh?
Northern DeKalb or Gwinnett?
DeKalb.
Fair enough.
Yeah, my laws affect everyone in here.
Yes.
Well, I was expecting the comments from the other, is anybody else have comments?
Mayor and council, uh, you know, I was watching for two meetings now. And, um, I want to thank one of the, from, uh, doing the jobs. And tonight, what I've seen is exactly how, um, the community and leaders should be. We have, uh, legal aid for the senior seniors and people who need legal help. We have law enforcement officers who protect the community, uh, who is being recognized. And I've seen, um, students, um, who are being recognized for the wonderful work for this community and the wonderful creed that was there. And I look across the room and I see all the different walks of life of people being here and interested, uh, in this meeting, uh, or meetings. Now, um, what I am concerned about is, um, the way the executive session was handled. Because, um, I believe that it is clearly a conflict that occurred. You have to understand that when people come in here, just like tonight, everybody is looking up to all of you to be leaders of this community. And when you take an action as you did at the last executive session, you have to understand that there are people out there who does not know what's going on. And honestly, nobody did. But people could look at you and say, no matter what you did, you could act in favor of one of your own colleagues. And there'll be some others that will look upon you that will say, because you guys have been at discussions and sometimes on issues that are at odds with each other, that no matter what you do, uh, you would be against somebody. So it was surprising to me that you took the effort that in my mind was clearly a conflict of interest. And secondly, just as concerning to me, you gave no due process whatsoever. The purpose of having a complaint against somebody is to go through the procedures. And we have procedures. You guys have your own charters with procedures. And instead of allowing those procedures to go forward, you went behind closed door in an executive session and went and made a political statement against one of your own colleagues. And as evidence of that, if you look at your own, um, resolution that you put out, the accuser was actually attested in that resolution. So, um, this is the reason why, um, I stood up and asked you, what are we talking about? Because it's easy to say personnel and nobody has a clue. And because we want to be respectful to you, we want to give you deference. Last time, we didn't ask any questions, but we don't want that to happen again. And this is why it is impressed upon, um, you that the concerns that we have regarding what happened at the last executive session. So, um, I don't know what is going to happen with that, but, um, clearly I think it is legally improper. And I hope that you will, um, make, um, considerations for procedure, due process and considerations of conflict in these kind of actions in the future. Thank you.
Excuse me, sir. Will you get your name?
Yes, my name is Maine Lynn.
Other comments? Anybody else?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Victoria Wen, I'm a president of the Georgia API Hub that serves and supports the caste and non-copants and organizes rapid response for the community. Um, and that includes many of the Vietnamese-American immigrants and immigrants here in the city of Marl. And for the past fifteen years, I've served residence of Marl through my non-copant work. Um, I am here to again, um, you know, to make sure that we remind Councilwoman Dean that we are still waiting for an apology. Our community has not forgotten. The words still, um, are still hurtful and offensive to not only Asian-Americans in all communities, um, you know, who are immigrants, who are Hominance proficient, who are still today fighting for the civil rights and still fight for, um, the opportunity to vote in the language of their choice. And so, Councilwoman Dean, we have reached out, um, to you through many organizations, not only locally, statewide, but nationally. And still, we have not heard a response yet or, or even a word of apology to the community for your hurtful words. And I also want to bring up some concerns for the past special session. Our communities here mobilized and was here, um, to be at a meeting that the council has, you know, given not even twenty-four hour notice publicly. Um, and when the council voted, they voted on resolutions, you voted on resolutions and numbers, not even providing a title or a summary of what you were voting for. And I felt that that did not give the time or respect for the people that came out to the public meeting to even understand what the council was voting for. And on behalf of the community and the community that were present, they deserve better. They deserve more. They deserve to know exactly who their elected officials, um, what they're voting on, what their issues are, what they're speaking about. Um, and for it to be posted on the website the day after? That was, that was very alarming, right? That the council wouldn't even address and even asking council members what they were voting for and, and being told that the mayor and council, uh, told them that they were not allowed to speak, even about what the resolution was about was very, very concerning. And also speaking to other city council members from other areas in North Carolina, they also blame us in, in the concern of the transparency, the lack of transparency with this council. And it's also concerning that the past few meetings, as the representative members and representatives of residents in Marl, as a community leader, that the community still, to the state, don't understand the referendum and even till today. And I'm asking the council now, why wasn't the work done? Why weren't the questions asked prior to the vote? Councilwoman Dean bringing up the vote? Why wasn't the city of Marl or the, the county applying consultant prior to bringing up the vote? And that has been an issue of hot topic for this community. This community has been asking for multilegal ballots and why wasn't the city attorney consulted prior, right, till today? And so those are some of the concerns that really lead the communities asking questions. Right, why weren't these questions being asked, um, prior to votes and even after vote? Why weren't community organizations and folks that are working in the city of Marl? Why weren't city council members reaching out? And many of those have offered, um, support, offered education, right, in this area, but yet no one's been reached out to. So I just wanted to make sure that those concerns were uplifted and also to, um, you know, share my concerns that the community is talking about right now in the city of Marl. So thank you.
Any other questions? You too? Yes, ma'am?
Okay, I wrote it down. Try to stay under two minutes, you guys don't have time, that's cool. You know that was a period.
Hello, all, uh, mayor and council members. Um, nice to meet you all. My name is Christopher Greer. Um, my first time here, obviously, um, but it won't be my last. I'm the co-founder of Protect the OGA, um, and a proud resident and registered business owner of Marl City, Georgia. Come on. Thank you. Uh, I've had the pleasure of living in Marl for five years. I've also had the pleasure of joining, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Renee Knight, uh, on a on a walking trail event before, and that was really nice. I remember telling everybody, I need to come tomorrow. I need to move tomorrow. It's really nice here. One of the reasons I love living in Morrow is the diversity of the residents. My neighbors are Vietnamese and one of my closest friend's mom is Vietnamese. She stays less than a mile away from me and frequents my house for Thanksgiving dinner. I was really excited about the night market we had because I love to get the opportunity to immerse myself in other cultures. One of the reasons I co-founded Protect the OGA is because I realized there was an active effort in Georgia to restrict voting rights to voters. It happened for me when they dropped SB 202. And ever since, it's been our mission to ensure that marginalized and disenfranchised voters still participated in Georgia elections. That's why we signed on as an organization to the letter sent to the council on July 25th with over 30 voting rights for expand advocates across GA to express our deep concerns about what's taking place here in Morrow. Counties are required to provide multilingual ballots if more than 5% of its voting age citizens are members of language minority groups that do not speak or understand English adequately enough to participate in the electoral process. Nearly 30% of Morrow is Vietnamese, and I knew that without the United States. We must uphold the Voting Rights Act, the 14th and the 15th Amendment to the United States Constitution, and work together to eliminate discrimination in our electoral process. This should be an easy call. So, how can we help you expand voter access to Spanish and Vietnamese residents for the November 7th and 2024 elections today? Thank you for your time and consideration.
Last handout. Comments from the city council? Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, I got a handover here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Lloyd.
Hi, everyone. For those of you that don't already know me, my name is Oscar Lanzamehivad. I'm a resident here in Morrow. Been here since I was a small child, maybe five or six years old. As with, you know, any of these public forums, I want to thank the mayor and the city council for giving us the opportunity to bring, you know, some of these potential issues to light and, you know, really discuss them, right? So, a couple of things that I've noticed today that I kind of wanted to come up here and kind of just, you know, maybe ask some clarifying questions or, you know, get a better understanding just for myself. And I'm sure if I have the questions, other people here might have those, the same questions. So, the representative, thank you for the information that you provided. Something that was concerning for me, just generally, is, and this is something I did not know, the members of the city council just generally not having access to the city attorney, I think is a little problematic. The reason I think that is because, you know, I'm not saying this is the case or this would ever be the case, but the potential that a situation like this could exist is enough, I think, for any member of the council to be able, you know, to have access to the city attorney. If there is a situation in which there is a propriety by the city manager and the mayor or either actor, it would be in the best interest of, you know, not just the council, but the city generally, for them to be able to go directly to the city attorney and be like, hey, this doesn't seem right. What's going on here, right? So, just like the representative, I would like to know why that change was made. Maybe not today, maybe, you know, maybe no one has an answer right now. But that is something that, as a resident of the city, that I would like to know. Does anyone here today have reasoning or would like to speak on why that change was made?
You can ask the council members individually. This case is your chance to say it.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that. So, that, you know, was the first thing that kind of came to my attention here today. The next thing was, you know, I do understand that the issue that came up with adding the multilanguage access to these ballots, it was brought up by, it was blocked by the county, right? We've discussed that. My belief, my thought on that is that just because the county said no, we shouldn't necessarily, you know, stop, right? Trying to get something like that done. Two years is a long time. A lot can change in two years. And the fact that, you know, more effort wasn't put into potentially engaging community members or organizations within the community to maybe get something like that done, I think, isn't great. Yeah, yeah, the county said no. But why not engage, you know, voting rights groups within the city, within the state to challenge the county attorney, to challenge whatever reasoning the attorney or whoever has given, especially if, you know, as the mayor has stated, those reasons could potentially be, you know, just be asked as posturing, right? If the right outcome is beneficial to our community generally, it's something we should explore every avenue to get done, right? And, you know, I've, you know, had discussions with some of the members on the council. And I'll tell everyone here and everyone on the council the same thing that I told them. I am happy, happy, happy to make myself available, whatever, you know, networks, whatever resources that I have access to to get whatever positive change needs to happen here within the community. So, just, you know, I think we can get it done. And if, you know, if it's impossible, at least we can say we tried, right? We don't have to stop it. Just, oh, you know, the county said no, right? At least not in my opinion. So, I have to sit here today. Thank you, everyone, for listening to me. And I hope you all have a nice day.
Another question. Mr. Mayor?
So, thank you, State Representative Martin, for not the concern about the legal access to from the council to the city attorney. And, uh, first your name?
Oscar.
Oscar, yes, to address that concern as well. And to answer Oscar's question, why did this council make that change? This go back two years ago, when the council member myself, which was myself, started to have questions related to city business. In during that specific time, it was the city were trying to engage a contract with the MCDA organization there. In that contract, the mayor wanted to be the chairperson of MCDA. So, thank goodness, the resident Ray Collins spoke up and he said that's the conflict of interest. Because the mayor is the chief of the city. And then, he also is the chief of this MCDA. So, what would be the check and balances in that scenario? And in that track of the contract, there are so many things that I saw that would not be the good, the best interest to not to protect the city. Because, and I, there are one examples, let's say, the council will approve the budget to the MCDA to operate the event. But then, if the MCDA wants, if the budget changed and the MCDA will let the council know. So, still, I have to not really well protect the city. So, I started to have questions. And I was told that my question had to go through the channel of the city manager and the mayor. But yet, would my question be travel from myself to the attorney? Is the question be not the original question being asked? And I consistently asked, could I talk with the attorney directly to avoid confusing so I can have a clear answer on my question? It was, and I would not allow. So, and I remember all that night, the city attorney sitting right with the office sitting right there. And I asked, why do I have to go through the city manager and the mayor for the question? Because it's not particularly in the charter. The charter say that any council member, this doesn't say really that much, but this means that any council can have access to the city attorney. I didn't get a clear answer. And the mayor also say, if I want one, he will write one. And the one that go written to the council that the city attorney is only provide the legal advice to the city manager, the mayor, or the attorney of the council. At the time we passed that ordinance, I did ask and raise a concern that will slow down the council access to the legal advice, to be informed, to make the decision for the city businesses. And it was, this was explained by the city attorney that it not mean to be that way. But the fact that it did happen and that when I raised a question to the city manager or the mayor, that question be ignored. The most recent question that I asked was to have the mayor to get with the city attorney about the section to pre-voting right act, the city, if it apply to the city or to have the city of Morrow voters have the same access that would that voter have. And I never got a response. And another good example is that on December 28, 2021, when this council voted to appoint media member and with my record, it's so that the term that we appointed were incorrect. It might have been incorrect. And I sent, I sent the email to city manager at Morrow and copy the city, copy the mayor, copy all the council members and the attorney and asked to have the attorney review the term to make sure that we do the right, we appointed people who are able into the correct term. And this is what the mayor respond. When only good question go through city manager, why you continue to send city attorney a copy to your emails? They will not respond unless the question come from the mayor, the city manager, or the request approved by the city council. This method have been agreed by four councils and you have repeatedly ignored that process. If you want answer to your questions, use the city approved process. Otherwise, they will be ignored. So, for a very long time, I have not been able to get the legal access to fulfill my diligence because most of the time, everything come to the council is the last thing. We have projects have a million dollars, seven hundred thousand being posted to cover for only two weeks. The job opportunities only allows to cover for two weeks. And then, the bid came in, the city attorney had not reviewed the bid or checked the qualification, the city had not checked the qualification of the bid before the council select the bid. That's all the concern. And council member not necessary to have the attorney. So, there are a lot of law requirement that we would need to understand and to need to be advised, need to be informed so we can make the right decision. And having for the council to, the practice of other cities that the attorney is sitting in the council meeting, in every council meeting. So, if we have any question, we can ask the attorney. Or if we, what is about going to do something we not supposed to do, the city attorney would assist us so avoid the council member or the city to get involved into the council ability. And not, all of that being removed. And I would like to, I would appreciate if the city attorney is sitting here, and we are sitting here in this council meeting so the council member can have the legal access to have an understanding what we're doing, just like the question of legitimate approved process for the referendum ballot tonight, the way you can answer that. But yet, you go ahead and make the decision related to that. That's a great consult.
Comments from this side?
Thank you all for coming. Kudos to all those who were recognized this evening.
Let to congratulations to those police officers here. And thank you, everyone, for coming. Have you guys come often to join us in the meeting? Thank you.
Ms. Dean?
Yes, also, I'd like to say congratulations to the officers that were promoted. They do an awesome job for the city and we really appreciate the jobs that they do. To Rachel Scott, I just want to say again, it is a wonderful thing that she did for the city of Morrow and for Mr. and Mrs. Wilson. That is something that is a problem going forward with seniors. Anyone that is reaching the age of being called a senior, you know, there's issues that they develop. And this couple did develop some issues that were due to aging. And Attorney Scott stepped in and did a miraculous thing for the city. And I just want to say thank you to her for stepping up and being there in the meantime. You're wonderful students here that make us proud. We know that you are our future. So, thank you so much for what you're doing.
All my news is basically, you got to see some raw stuff tonight. You got to see the city council work the way through. Not bad. Mostly going to the executive session. Do I hear a second? Most in all the papers say office now.
I.
Ms. Paul. Ms. Trent.
How do we think about half hour, to be honest? We should be back.
So, you want to do it tonight, not just now?
Yes.
Okay. Stand by. Did you get my pass?
Okay.
Because I've been blocked out by the predecessors. I need both. We ain't playing. We're going to roll out a big one.
End this meeting. Start the other meeting at half p.m. here. Welcome to our executive session. Executive session. All right. Very much in the exit executive session. All right, direct motion to exit executive session. Do I hear a second? All those in favor to say aye this night? Ms. Dean?
Aye.
Ms. Qua?
Aye.
And Ms. Trent?
Aye.
Okay. Carrie, feel your motion to adjourn. Do I hear a second? All those in favor to say aye this night? Ms. Dean?
Aye.
Ms. Qua?
Aye.
And Ms. Trent?
Aye.
Congratulations, Ms., um, for today.